Did we hear from anybody about the questions Stuart raised?
No one knew yet, but we'll see. We'll see. Always good to be in communication with people.
Yeah.
So we're, we are down James and Brian, but John should be logging on soon, so we're good.
How about Connor Wink?
I haven't talked to him in weeks.
I talked to him.
I was wondering if he ever returned our email.
Oh, I, I called him when I was talking to everybody about the, you know, the housing oversight thing and the CA thing and, I don't know, I mean.
Did you speak to him?
I spoke to him, yeah, but it took, it took Melissa reaching out to him.
Musicians.
Yeah, I had, I had left him a message on his, you know, text message and that's what his email, that's what his voice message says to do, but he didn't answer it.
I have to wait for you one minute, I'll be right back.
I went to send like a quorum email and I was like, no, I can count on Judy, Peter, Stuart and John.
Hey Sandy.
Hope Don's coming on.
Hi Melissa.
Hi Peter, how are you?
Okay, waiting for a quorum, there's John.
There's John, we got a quorum, well.
But Stuart, but John.
Two minutes, we have two minutes. Hi John.
Hello.
Hey John.
Hello Judith.
Oh, I got myself up for an 8:30 webinar, which was a wonderful webinar, but I am so sleepy.
Try getting up at 5:30 every morning.
Well, if you do it every morning, get used to it. Although I'm, I'm not a morning person, never have been.
Judith, before we start, can I just show you something and we could talk offline about it?
Yeah.
You know this magazine?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
You might have sparked my curiosity Stuart, I might need to be in this conversation, I'm just kidding.
Big black clouds coming this way, I gotta tell you.
Yes.
It's gross outside.
It's pretty dark out there. Are they have the internet interrupting variety?
Let's hope not.
Okay, everybody.
It looks like we're gonna have fog tonight.
It is 6:30. So I'm, and we have a quorum, so I'm going to call to order the Woodstock Planning Board Regular Meeting of March 31st, 2022, held by Zoom. And are there any updates to the agenda Melissa?
Um, we just received two emails that you guys all got, that's it.
All right, under Communications and Announcements, we have an email from S. Blair regarding the colony, which of course hasn't been settled yet, and we have two emails from LMT Lover regarding the discussion the planning board had on March 17th about bringing the sewer line up to the light industrial area in Bearsville, but that's nothing that's on the board. So, under Scheduled Business, we have two cases. We have a public hearing and a sketch plan review, a public hearing from Centerline and a sketch plan review from T-Mobile. And at this point, I'm going to ask the Vice Chair Stuart Lipkin to chair the rest of this meeting. So Stuart, if you would be so kind, please to do so.
Thank you Peter, and before we proceed, I just want to note that Kim Garrison is, is present as he here on the Zoom from Granton Lyons, our law firm. So the first item is Centerline Communications as Agent for New Singular Wireless PCS LLC parentheses AT&amp;T. This is SPRK's 22-0322F and SUP 22-0361F. This is on for a virtual public hearing for site plan review and special use permit applications as an eligible facilities request to modify the site plan and to upgrade equipment on the town-owned telecommunications tower at 122 California Quarry Road. So the listed representatives are, represent, I'm sorry, are Brenda Blast Lewis and Site Acquisition Consultant, and I think Sarah Stevens is also here. Is Ms. Blast Lewis, are you on the line?
I am.
Okay, you can hear us okay?
I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, and Sarah Stevens, who's a project manager with Centerline is also with us, is that right?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so since this is on for a public hearing, it's an opportunity for the public to weigh in with comments and questions they may have, and I'm glad that the representatives are here. So I wanted to entertain a motion to open the public hearing at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so to begin the public hearing, I would like to give the representatives an opportunity to make a brief statement to the public as to the nature of the relief that you're seeking from the planning board.
Okay, AT&amp;T is seeking to replace some existing equipment installed on the telecommunications tower that's at 122 Quarry Road. The upgrades will consist of removing four antennas and replacing two new antennas, so there would be, you know, two, two less antennas installed. They're going to remove two, two tower mount amplifiers, 12 diplexers, eight radios and reinstall eight new radios, and they're going to remove eight coax lines, and they're replacing two DC power lines with two new DC power lines and reinforcing existing mounts. And that, that's the work that they're proposing to do.
Okay, are there any members of the public that wish to speak at this time? And if so, can you wave your hand or use the wave hand indicator or speak up so I know that you want to talk? Okay. Okay, state your name sir.
You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm Weston Bleelock, I'm a resident of Woodstock. I'm about a mile or so from the tower down Meads Mountain Road. I am, suffer from electromagnetic sensitivity and I'm aware that the first application had 5G attached to the title and I watched the last proceeding and, you know, learned that the application this time around, although it didn't have 5G in the title, is identical to the last application. And so I've been active on this issue for at least four years. I'm very concerned about having 5G on the tower and I feel that the town knows about the health issues, although we're not supposed to talk about them. But I do, I did receive a copy of the master agreement, the lease agreement today, and I see that the equipment that it's allowed, the frequency for the equipment is, has not been upgraded to accept the kind of latitude that 5G poses for the town. So I'm of the, of the opinion that the town has to, or rather the applicant has to support Stuart's position, that the applicant has to go through the town to get permission to put this change there and also the change represents a upgrade of the signal. So there's several issues here that have to be resolved. So it's not a single eligible facility request, it's not a simple one because we're talking about a change in the master agreement. So that's my bit, thank you.
Is there anyone else, John, John Laval, did you want to weigh in on that?
Well, I don't know about weighing in on Weston's comments, but I certainly would just like to ask a question.
Of the applicant?
No, of you. I would just like to know if the town has any correspondence giving permission for them to do this, since the applicant is really the town of Woodstock.
Okay, does anyone else want to talk about that at this point? I'll address my view of it, but I'm just one person on the planning board. Okay. I don't have any direct approval from the town board, which is the governing body and the proprietor of the tower, the town of Woodstock. I don't have any direct communication from the town board as a whole authorizing the release that the applicant seeks. I have received two separate, I've seen two separate emails, one from Bill McKenna giving his personal opinion that the manager of the tower Crown Castle has the power under the master agreement to authorize the application, but it doesn't go beyond that in terms of his opinion. And then today I received an email from another town board member Bennett, who took the same position, but indicated he was only speaking for himself, that's Bennett Ratcliffe, that he was only speaking for himself and not for the entire board. But he indicated he would circulate the question that I asked him, namely, is his opinion shared by a majority of the board or not? And he said he's only speaking for the town board, and so he would circulate our email exchange to the other board members, but I haven't heard anything further. So to answer your question, John, I'm not aware of any direct approval by the board as a board of the changes that are being proposed. But I, I don't want to, I, I'd like to continue with the public comments because I don't want to miss anyone who wants to weigh in since they're on the call, we can come back and discuss it after that if you permit me to do that. So are there any other members of the public that wish to make a comment or ask a question at this point during a public hearing?
I see Azera Capelli is raising her hand, so Azera, if you could unmute yourself, that would be great.
Okay, my name is Victor Capelli, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I hope my stentorian voice is able to carry to all of you folks, but I would like to make a couple of questions because I'm a retired environmental analyst and I have a background in, in some of the materials that you are discussing right now about the 5G tower. I would like to make a couple of pertinent scientific questions to everybody. The 5G towers, wherever they might be in place in an environment such as Woodstock or the area, we have to consider the, what's known as the peripheral effects of the transmission energy that's, that is being transmitted to the surrounding environment. The ambient relationship of distance from the towers reflects in the actual health of the organisms, the animals, the plants, the trees, and the ecology of those towers. And then as an ecologist, I have to tell you that when you compound the influence of those microwave radiation impulses to the environment, you have a cumulative effect in the health of all the organisms in the area. It falls off with distance, however, when you talk about the boosting of power with 5G, you're talking about a boosting of peripheral effects that's inversely relation to that. And this is something that should be addressed by the, by the folks, by you, by you guys, because environmentally speaking, it is something that is cumulative and chronic with time. It is not just simply a one-off effect, but actually it increases with time and you will see those effects in the general ecology with time. Most apparent will be actually the migratory influences of birds and animals, which are affected by the microwave tower transmissions. And that's especially noticeable in the breeding season between April and, and August. So these are things that I think all of you folks should be addressing also, the ecological effects, the parameters involved there of the 5G.
Mr. Capelli, Stuart Lipkin here, Vice Chairman of Planning Board, where do you live?
I live in, we live in the town of Ulster.
Okay, and what is your background to?
I have a background in environmental. Sorry.
What is, can you hear me?
Yes.
What is your background as, you know, what's your, do you have a credential or the background?
Yes, I do, I have a background in, oh. I have a background from Cornell University, I'm an environmental analyst, and I also from SUNY Culbeyskill as official one technician, and I have a degree, post, postgraduate degrees in environmental geology. So I have, I'm an environmental analyst by training and by education.
Thank you for answering my question, I do want to make the statement that we discussed this amongst the board several times, that under the federal law, this is an eligible facilities request. We are, as a planning board, prohibited, it's my understanding, from, from considering the environmental effects if, if a request qualifies as an eligible facilities request. There's federal regulations and laws that restrict us in this area. But my own personal view is that as owner of the tower, I, I don't think the town board is similarly constrained. That is, they have proprietary rights that we as a regulatory planning board do not have. And so I just wanted to make that comment because I'm allowing you, allowing you to put your comments into the record concerning environmental effects, but you have to understand that as a planning board, we're not allowed to take them into account in, in deciding whether to approve or deny the application. And I just want to ask Ms. Garrison, is that consistent with your understanding of the statutes as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, did you have any further comments sir?
Oh, well, that's probably my purview right now, but I think in the future, I think in the planning for these kind of sites, the environmental influences should be taken into account because basically we're talking about the environmental health of the entire community.
Unfortunately, Congress has tied our hands, there's federal laws that restrict us as a planning board. However, again, I think that the proprietor of the tower, that is the town board who were elected by the citizens of Woodstock, that may be the place for your concerns about the environmental effects to be directed since they have discretion over the lease terms with the cell carriers and so on, that we as a planning board do not have. So.
Thank you.
Okay, I see John has his hand up again, John Laval?
Yes, sorry to be interrupted again.
All right, I apologize.
During the last two sessions, I've asked questions regarding power and frequency. In both cases, I was told that the people who were at the meeting, representing the owner, could not answer it because they were quote, "not engineers." So my questions still, and they do somewhat bear on what was just said. He is correct. The influence of the microwaves is, diminishes with distance, number one, but it's also very dependent upon frequency. And I believe the 5G is a different frequency than the 4G. So if, I would like the owner to please weigh in on that.
You mean the applicant?
The applicant.
All right.
That was what I was going to point out, they're not the owner.
No, no, I'm sorry Judy, you are correct. The owner of the tower itself, they may own the equipment, but they leased the tower.
Well, my view is that the town owns both the tower and the land under it. And I think that's clear from the documents, and I don't think it's something that can be disputed, but you know, I think the questions can be raised in a public hearing, and I still do want to hear from the public, but I would take this opportunity to give the representatives, if they can, if they want it, if they can answer Mr. Laval's questions, why don't you do so now? Stevens or Ms. Blast Lewis want to take up those questions, give you an opportunity to do that?
I'll, I'll, I'll respond, it would be, I would love it if we could get all of the questions. Uh, yeah, Brenda's mic isn't working for some reason, you know, just make sure we get all the questions. We can address everything as efficiently and succinctly as possible. But in this case, what we can say is that AT&amp;T, as the FCC license holder, will meet all of their obligations, restrictions, limitations, and requirements of their FCC licenses. And, and terms of actual power at any given time, it, it, you know, you are correct. We are not the engineers and would not be able to answer that, but it actually also is not relevant to the eligible facilities request determination. So I don't think us not being engineers and answering that has an impact on, on the hearing and the application that's at hand. Hopefully that, hopefully that's a sufficient response for you.
Well, it really doesn't answer the specific questions that were asked, but I'm taking your comment as an indication that you're not able to answer the questions at this point. Is that fair?
I would, I would, I think it would be more, I don't think it's pertinent to the application at hand and, and and isn't something that our client would have authorized us to provide that information because it's not relevant.
Are you willing to supply someone from the engineering end of your business to answer these technical questions?
Uh, it's not the type of question that would be applicable to the application at hand, so I would say no.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to make a comment or ask a question during this public hearing? If so, please indicate.
Actually Stuart, I just have a follow-up question for Ms. Stevens. Um, I understand what, you know, the eligible facility request and what your, the application is, but under the master management agreement, there is a statement saying that what the, the purpose is, is for the 800 frequency range. Can you just answer that question if this, if this application is within that range?
Uh, AT&amp;T's frequencies that they will be using do include that. Um, I would not say they are limited to that and AT&amp;T's ability to operate at different frequencies on this site would be in keeping with whatever rights and or limitations are associated with their agreement with the town as the landlord and are things that they, you know, are worked through with Crown and Crown as the town's representative, the town or with the town, and again, that would be outside of the, outside of the current application in terms of an eligible facilities request, but AT&amp;T, you know, certainly commits to operate within the rights and obligations of their agreements with the town.
Now, let me interrupt, we're getting feedback from other people. If you're not speaking, please mute, mute your devices so we don't get the feedback. And Ms. Stevens, did you complete your comment in response to council's question?
Yes, I think so.
So I have a question that arose in my mind during your answer, and that is, is the equipment that you're proposing to put in, put onto the tower, is that new equipment capable of putting out signals at higher frequency than 800? Is it 800 megahertz? I don't want to mistake.
Yes, yes, and I think the existing equipment that is on that site, if I'm, I would have to go and check, but my, my expectation is that existing equipment on that site is not limited to 800 megahertz as well.
But is the, is the equipment that you're going, you're going to be operating if this application is granted, will it be exceeding the limits in the master agreement?
Uh, as I said, AT&amp;T will definitely be operating within, within their rights, obligations, et cetera, under the agreement that they have in place with the town, whether it be through the existing, whether it was through an amendment, whatever obligations are there, AT&amp;T will be operating within that. As I said, existing operations at that site, I expect are not limited to the 800 megahertz frequency bands. So I don't expect that to significantly, I don't expect what they are putting on the tower now has, you know, has any different impact than what, what they have on there now in terms of their lease rights.
Okay, but I'm not asking you about your expectations, I want to know what you know and what you can tell us as a fact or not a fact.
I, I, that, that's what I can tell you.
Do you know what the frequency output is of the equipment that's going to be going onto the tower?
Uh, I do not have that information in front of me, and again, I would say that's not relevant to the application at hand.
Do you know it? Yes or no?
It, it doesn't matter, it's not relevant, so there's no need for me to answer that.
Taking that as a no with all due respect. Okay.
No, it, it wasn't a no, I didn't say I knew or didn't know, I just said it's not relevant.
Well, that's a no. Who, but we don't need to debate it. Are there any other members of the public that wish to be heard during this public hearing? And so raise your hand or speak up so I know that you're wanting to do that. Melissa, did you see any signals? I don't see any.
I don't see any signals.
Do any of the town board, I'm sorry, do any of the planning board members have any questions that they want to raise with the applicants during this public hearing while the public is still on the line? Judy, Carmen?
Yes, um, we seem to be stuck at the same position. The applicant has failed to provide us with documentation that the town has given them authority to deal with us, and I don't know what we can do under those circumstances.
Okay, well, we can, we can, I would suggest we deal with that question after the public hearing is closed. Because that's something that we ought to discuss. Are there any other members of the, of the board, the planning board that wish to speak further during a hearing? John Laval? John?
You're muted, John.
Sorry. When I took my FCC exam, specifically on antennas and transmission, I was required to know all of this and I don't know enough right now because of the fact that we have an incredible dance being done by the applicant at this point. As far as I'm concerned, it's a very incomplete submission.
Are there any other comments from any other board members? Hearing none, are there any other comments, thoughts that want to be expressed or questions asked by members of the public?
Yeah, I was going to say, if, if you guys don't know how to raise your hand on Zoom, if you unmute yourself, we can hear you. We can give you, you know, a few seconds if you want to be heard.
Going once? Going twice? Okay, so at this point, there being no further comments offered from the members of the public, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. Okay. Well, we have a few minutes yet before our next matter, which is on at 7:05, which is a sketch plan review, so I will open up the floor to the other board members for a discussion of this matter as to where you think we ought to go and how.
I've said my piece.
Okay.
And Stuart, may I make a suggestion? So the question that Judy and John and yourself have raised regarding the authority of the owner of the property. So being that we've already heard from Bill Supervisor, Chair McKenna and Bennett from the councilmen, you know, Bennett said that he was going to be asking the other town board members, I'd say we just, you know, let's see what the other town councils say. You know, I, I think that that might help us if, if there's more opinion from the other town board members as to what their authority is and, and who they gave authority to. We do have, for the shot clock, the next meeting, April 7th, is still within that period, so we can wait, see if we get any more opinions and comments from the town board on that issue, and then perhaps address that in more detail at the April 7th meeting.
Sure, I'm, I'm certainly interested in, in what the town board's view is of its own agreement, the management agreement for the tower, I think that would carry some weight if, if a majority of the board would tell us what their view is, but we don't have a majority statement of what their view is at this point. I think if a majority tells us, then that may, you know, resolve, resolve. I think if a majority tells us, then that may, you know, resolve, resolve the issue because it's their agreement. They're entitled to view it and construe it um as they, they read it. Um, but I, I, I want to keep this in our lane and not overstep our, our bounds here. But at the same token, um, in every case that we've had, we've always had either the owner before us or an applicant with authority from the owner. So I don't want to run afoul of, of that principle in this case. So um, there's also other things we're gonna need to discuss in terms of, we, we recognize that we have constraints from the federal statutory scheme as to requiring us to approve eligible facilities requests. And I think we should just, that should be on the agenda to discuss as well when we next convene on this. So I'm going to suggest that we defer uh this case for further discussion at our next meeting, which I believe is April 7th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So um, you know, the other board members in a, in accord with that to um continue this matter on it on April 7th as a discussion item and potentially to reach a consensus as to what to do.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so um, I want to thank the applicant's representatives for participating, Ms. Stevens and Ms. Blast Lewis. And um, the case will again be on on April 7th. Melissa will uh let you know the scheduled time of the proceeding, so you'll be able to join us. We'll still be on Zoom at that point, Melissa.
We will still be on Zoom, yes.
Okay, very good. So this matter is concluded for today, and we'll continue it on, on April 7th. Let's just take two minutes. It's okay with you. All right? Two-minute break. Okay, this is Stuart. I'm back, and I'm not sure everyone else's. Let's just see. Waiting for Peter and Judith is on. John, back on?
He was.
John Laval? We'll give him a chance to come back. Thank you to everyone else for your patience. Here it comes. Hey, John, you with us? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, very good. So uh, we still have a quorum. And um, at this point, let's move to the sketch plan review on T-Mobile Northeast LLC. This is SPR case number 22-0322G and SUP case number 22-0361G's sketch plan review for site plan review and special use permit applications as ineligible facilities request for modifications to the existing monoplane telecommunication tower facility at 122 California Quarry Road. Representative is Robert Godioso of Snyder and Snyder LLP. Mr. Godioso, are you on the line?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
How are you? Welcome. So um, this is a sketch plan review. So we'd like to give you an opportunity to um kind of explain uh the relief that you're seeking and what this is all about.
Sure. Um, on behalf of the applicant, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, we did make an application to the building department uh and the planning board uh for an eligible facilities request or in the alternative, an amendment of the existing site plan and special use permits uh for this existing facility at the town-owned property uh and the town-owned tower managed by Crown Castle. Um, T-Mobile has an existing facility at the property. We're proposing to replace two equipment cabinets that are at the base of the facility with two new equipment cabinets. We're also proposing to replace um four existing antennas and two previously approved but not installed antennas with six new antennas, six uh coax cables with uh three fiber cables, and add uh six small radios. The uh application that we submitted included a number of items. We submitted uh copies of the uh building permit application form, the site plan application form, the special permit application form, special use permit checklist, the waiver request form, uh, all of which we also presented simultaneously to the town board to request, to the extent necessary, uh, the town board's execution of those forms. I did receive a uh, a phone message uh from the supervisor indicating that Crown Castle is the proper entity to sign. We presented those forms to Crown Castle and, and asked them to sign pursuant to their management agreement. We also submitted a certification of compliance uh from T-Mobile's engineer, which uh included certification that the facility uh would comply with FCC regulations regarding uh power, uh frequency, uh radio frequency exposure and interference. We submitted two structural analysis reports, one for the tower, one for the mount analysis. We submitted T-Mobile's insurance certificates. We submitted a short environmental assessment. We submitted a photo evaluation, uh photographs of the surrounding area. Uh, we submitted a technical memorandum, which included propagation coverage maps showing the need for the facility, outlining the existing frequencies that are currently operating on the tower and the proposed frequencies that would be added with this modification. And we submitted a copy of the site plans. Uh, we do believe this is an eligible facilities request because it's a non-substantial modification to the existing facility and base station. Uh, and we do believe in the alternative that it's subject to uh an amendment of both special permit and site plan as deemed necessary uh by the town. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions uh that you or the board may have.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your presentation. Um, I have some questions which I'm gonna ask, and then I'll open it up to the uh remaining board members to, to see, you know, what they want to find out as well. So um, yeah, as to um, uh, you're having authority from the owner of the tower and the land to uh present this application. You said that you spoke to supervisor who referred you over to Crown Castle and that you submitted a request to Crown Castle. Have, have you heard from Crown Castle in that regard?
So uh Crown Castle indicated that they uh would be responding with the signed applications, but I do not have one yet. I do not believe they're necessary under our agreement. I believe our agreement uh, which is a tri-party agreement uh with the town, Crown Castle's predecessor, and T-Mobile uh specifically allows us to make such modifications to the facility. Uh, specifically, there's no limitation as far as frequencies or anything like that.
Would you be able to supply this board with a copy of that agreement?
I could. It's a matter of public record, but I'd be happy to supply it.
All right, so if you could uh contact Melissa, who's our uh able clerk, and, you know, transmit it through her, and then she can distribute it to the board members. Thank you. Okay, um. Okay, let's see. So are you aware that um T-Mobile was previously before us in July of 2021? And uh, decision was rendered on July 1 of 2021 uh finding that the application um defeated the concealment elements on the tower and therefore was not an eligible facilities request?
I am aware.
All right. So uh, I guess the question in my mind is, why should we rule differently now? What's different about your application now than what we had before?
Well, I think it's a completely different application regarding uh the application itself. Uh, the prior application, I believe, was submitted uh on, you know, on behalf of Crown Castle, on behalf of T-Mobile. Um, the application in this case, uh, I prepared personally uh without consultants and my client. Uh, I think the documentation uh far exceeds what was previously submitted. I believe the resolution you're referring to talked about the value of certain evidence. I think that we've uh, I think we've modified that. The facility itself has also been modified. Um, I believe that there was a statement about a, a 12-foot uh crossbeam. Uh, this is an eight-foot crossbeam. The uh application previously did not address uh the socks that were part of the original approval on the antennas. Those have been specifically identified on the plans. And also, I believe that the uh plans now also indicate that T-Mobile is, is uh willing to uh reinstall the branches in the area of the T-Mobile facility, which would completely conceal the proposed antennas uh and therefore uh would not defeat the stealth elements uh of the existing tower. Uh, we believe that based on the prior uh resolution amendment from some years ago, it's actually the town's responsibility to do that. Nevertheless, uh, T-Mobile has proposed as part of this application uh to reinstall those branches and the location of its proposed antennas and existing antennas. So I think there's a substantial difference between the prior application and this application. In addition to that, there's also a difference uh in applications in that I believe the prior application called for the addition of uh the equipment necessary for the 600 megahertz frequency range. This calls for the addition of equipment uh for both 600 additional 1900 uh and 2500 megahertz.
Could you repeat the last part of your answer? You're going a little too fast for me.
Sure.
At the 600 and, and after that. Go ahead.
So previously, I believe the application included the 600 megahertz frequency band. Uh, this is an application that includes the densification of uh T-Mobile's uh system by also including the uh 1900 megahertz, additional 1900 megahertz. There's 1900 megahertz now and 2500 megahertz. And we've set forth in the um technical memorandum from Dan Ford, uh RF engineer for T-Mobile uh dated uh January 11th, 2022, all of the frequency bands uh and all of the license numbers. Those licenses, of course, are a matter of public record. So we've set forth both the frequency bands, the actual blocks, and the license call numbers.
Thank you. Can you address the um? You, you made a comment about the different sizing of the uh support beams. I'm calling it support beams, the, the spars on which the antennas sit. And the last time, I think there was indication there were, there were 12-foot existing or.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not 100% where that number came from, but that was my understanding. Maybe I, I saw that in the uh, the denial resolution. Um, also. Yeah, I, I, I can tell you the current plan showed them as eight-foot crossbeams. Uh, and that's a, uh, that's a significant difference. And as I said.
Reduction in the, in the width of the array.
Correct, correct. And then, and though, and more importantly is that the array will be within the branches and the antennas will be covered with the artificial branch socks as originally called for in the original approval.
Can you tell me about the stealth socks? I'm not really familiar with that phrase. This case is the first time I've heard of it. So can you familiarize me, if you're able to, with what those are and what they do?
Sure. So, so essentially, um, they are similar material as the stealth branch needles. And they are attached to a sock-like uh design. And then they are slipped over the antennas, so that way the face of the antenna has the same pattern, texture, and color as the branches themselves. And that was, I'm sorry, that was specifically a condition of the prior approvals. And that is now specifically identified as being included with the uh proposed modification.
Are, are those weather resistant, I saw?
Yeah, they're, they're basically the same material as the, you know, very similar material as the needles on the uh, on the tower itself.
Would you have any uh photos that you might be able to supply us just as samples of what those look like typically, the stealth socks?
You know, I, I can see if we have one. Um, uh, they're fairly common. I, I will see if we can provide something like that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, so we can uh get up to speed on that particular item.
And that was, and that was heavily discussed in the original approval of the site uh back, I believe, 2010.
I, I don't recall it being mentioned the last time in 2021 when, when I was on the board. And uh, I wasn't on the board in 2010, but when um, T-Mobile was last before us in 2021, uh, by their, uh, by, represented by Mr. Zajak, I believe. Um, uh, I don't recall stealth socks being mentioned. That sounds new to me. But in any event, it would be helpful to see what they look like and sign.
I, I believe that is new, and I, I believe it was a condition of the, of the original approval, which is, I think, another, uh, another substantial change in the application from 2021 and, and the current application before you.
Okay, uh, the next question I have has to do with, are you, well, how do I ask this? Um, the area around the, the tower is divided for, our purposes into three, three different segments. You know, the alpha, gap, beta, and the gamma sectors. And you know, are there's, are there antenna, antennae on all three sectors at present, or are there not?
So we, we submitted, um, we submitted a specific report on this issue. Currently, there are two sectors because of the topography in the area. The proposal is to add the third sector, which was originally approved back in 2010. Uh, and it is consistent with one of the other carriers that's up there. I'm not exactly sure which one. Uh, I believe it's Verizon. So the plan is to have three sectors of antennas consisting of two antennas per sector to provide that additional coverage, which we did show in the coverage maps in the report submitted by Mr. Ford.
Can you tell me why uh since 2012, that third sector was not populated by antennas uh in the last, you know, 10 years?
I, I think it's, it's a function of the, you know, evolving uh network. The network provides coverage to a certain amount of users. Uh, the more, the reason you have sectors in the first place is that each sector is able to handle a certain amount of capacity. If you have three sectors, you have more capacity at a particular site uh than two sectors. Uh, so we're adding that third sector. We're availing ourselves of the FCC spectrum uh that we have uh purchased from the federal government. And we're providing better coverage uh to a certain area, which I, we've identified uh on the maps. And we're providing the additional uh densification by using the additional frequency spectrum that T-Mobile now has.
And uh, do you know that additional coverage would impact the western section of our town? I don't assume that you're, you're knowledgeable about the geography up here, but that's.
Well, I'm very knowledgeable of it, but um, I think that rather than to try and um, you know, rather than to try and characterize the western portion or not the western portion, what we, what we've shown uh in the report, and, and again, it's the report dated January 11th. It's in the package that we submitted on March 11th uh from Mr. Dan Ford. We, we added a map. Uh, it, it is an area uh that's identified on the second map. Uh, we actually put a, a red circle or red dotted circle around it to show that area. Um, but more importantly, uh, we're densifying our site with these additional frequency bands, which uh provides uh, you know, a better level of service and more complete service for T-Mobile.
When you say intensifying your site, what do you mean by that?
Uh, I didn't say intensifying. I said densifying.
Oh, densifying.
Yeah, so by, by densifying, each, each frequency band propagates differently. Some frequency bands propagate further, but they don't propagate as well into uh buildings and, and through foliage. Some frequency bands uh propagate less, but propagate uh into more dense areas. So by having different frequency bands, in this case, uh, from 600, uh, 1900, 2100, up to 2500, we're able to provide all those different levels of uh frequency bands, which basically uh allows us to provide all of our services.
Okay, well, thank you. Are you able to address um in what way, if any, uh, these additional frequencies bands uh will serve to uh enable 5G once that comes out?
So I, I'll say this. Number one, uh, as an eligible facilities request, the FCC is held up by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals uh has made it very clear that the FCC third report in order uh, that proof of need is not relevant to an eligible facilities request. With that said, we did submit a report to try and, in good faith, uh, show the board exactly what we were doing. Uh, this is a uh facility that, as in Mr. Report's, uh, Mr. Um, uh Ford's report notes, is for 4G service, to improve 4G service uh and. Is for four G service, to improve four G service, and it's not intended for five G. When people say the word five G, I've heard it even tonight. I mean, my question would be, how do you define five G? So I can give you a better answer. People are misinformed many times and think five G is at a higher power or at a much higher frequency band. Three point five gigahertz or something in that range. In fact, if you look at T-Mobile's, you know, publicly available information, they do five G in certain places at, at different frequency bands. So every carrier does it differently. Everyone's defining it different. I don't want to say whether something is, you know, capable or not capable of five G. The bottom line is this modification, as, as we submitted in writing in our application, to improve four G LTE service. Whether someday or not, it will, it will be able to, or it will be used for five G. It would be speculation on my part at this time, and I, and I don't have an answer for you. That would be beyond speculation.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the answers. It's, it's kind of helpful to me because I still have to get my, my layman's head around this stuff. Are you able to, is there a definition of five G that you understand is a proper definition that you could give us?
Well, my, my definition would be is that we are proposing here four G LTE and not five G. So we define, we define what we're doing here in Mr. Ford's report as four G LTE. It's LTE service. Five G comes in, you know, many different. You know, many different flavors, many different frequency bands, upload, download speeds. You know, I, I would not want to venture to try and, try and, you know, identify a specific. Definition of what five G is, just because we're not talking about it in this application.
Can you tell me what LTE, what that acronym stands for?
Sure, it's long-term evolution. It's the technology that is fairly ubiquitous for four G technology. So when you had three G technology, different carriers and different companies were using. Acronyms such as CDMA and TDMA, they generally use different types of technologies. They have, at least in America, have, have gone to a more standardized LTE, long-term evolution technology for four G services.
In terms of the jargon, sir, what, what is actually evolving over the long term? You're describing it as long-term evolution. What is it that is evolving?
That's just the, that's just what they named it. But essentially what LTE technology allowed for. Was more capacity faster, faster speeds, better service over three G. So if you remember the days of three G, you understand what the limitations were of three G. You understand the benefits of four G when you use a mobile device, you know. All different types of services are much faster, much, much more robust, whether it's phone calls or data services. It's just a, it's a, it's the next generation of wireless service.
I noticed also there was a photo evaluation study in your application. And some of the images said, had the word visible on them. Presumably referring to the tower in some fashion and others did not have that word visible. So I assume that wasn't an inadvertent deletion, right?
No, the, the, the photographs that say visible. If you were able to, I'm not personally able to discern the tower from those locations. It is discernible, the tower itself at a very far distance. And we tried to take photographs in the locations. That I think we discussed in the two thousand and twenty resolution, but also in some of the prior analyses. When the tower itself was approved, we went back and looked at some of those locations and we tried to take photographs. But again, I think that, I think that given the proposed branching, to be consistent with the original approved branching. The socks, the, you know, the location of the antennas vis a vis the mounting brackets. This will clearly not defeat the stealth elements of the existing tower or even the tower as it was originally approved.
Okay. Are all the antennas that you're proposing to install, will they all be covered by the stealth socks?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Those are the questions that come to mind on my, on my end. John Laval, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Guardioso for this presentation. Because we learned more in those few minutes than we have in weeks.
A little louder, please.
I said that I wanted to thank him for the presentation. I do have one question. I heard you mention a two point five gigahertz transmission range that you are currently not operating in. Is that correct?
Correct.
So what's, what's the purpose of installing such a relatively short distance transmission?
So. I neglected to mention another important factor. Each frequency band that we have licensed. Is not created equal. Now, you mentioned some training before, so I appreciate the fact that you probably appreciate. Six hundred propagates further than twenty five hundred, based on your question.
Understand.
What we don't have is, we don't have the same bandwidth in each frequency band. So we have generally. Higher bandwidth. At different bands and lower bandwidth at other bands. So some bands will travel much further, but they may not penetrate buildings or, or foliage as well. And we might not have as much bandwidth. So we may have coverage, but we may not have enough capacity if we only had that bandwidth. If we have the higher bandwidth and the twenty five hundred bandwidth is generally the spectrum that T-Mobile acquired when it acquired Sprint. We then closer to the tower have, Ms. Laval, I don't know if you're speaking, you're on mute. If, if we have higher bandwidth, we are covering the folks closer to the tower with that higher band. And we're able to not have a capacity problem further away from the tower with the lower band frequency that's propagating further. So it's really a mix of different frequency bands to be able to have different characteristics. And the benefit of LTE technology is that the system can, can use those frequency bands. And the bandwidth inside those frequency bands to the best amount, to the most efficient, you know, way to use that, that, that spectrum. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Now, you also mentioned, I'm sorry, really, you also mentioned propagation studies. So was there any indication from your propagation studies? What would occur as far as the coverage area, well, primarily to our west?
So. There is a topography limitation. And when you look. And I'll hold this up, and this is just a terrible way to do this. But that's our propagation map. And the reason it's cutting off to the top. Is because there's a mountain there. And this is in your report. We submitted this in your patch. And what we showed is by adding that third sector. We circled in the dot, red dot, that area where we're going to pick up some additional, some additional coverage. Now again, because it's an eligible facilities request, and that is to the west. But i- is it covering the west side of the town? No, I can't represent that to you. Are we getting additional coverage in that direction? Yes, we are. Are we adding the third sector? Are we getting additional capacity? Yes, we are, because we're making the system more efficient. Are we getting more capacity because we're adding these frequency bands? Yes, we are. So the system, the system is, is improving. But it's not like building a new tower on the western side of town. You know, I wish I could tell you that. I can't, I can't tell you that.
I under, I understand you can't tell us that because I was one of the people that objected to, to the particular location of the current tower. But because of the fact that it would never cover the western part of town. And there's nothing we can do about it. Except build another tower, which has its own political problems right now.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Carmen, member of the board.
I'd like to thank Mr. Guardioso for his very clear explanation. What's your position? What's your background?
Well, my, my background is I grew up working in my father's hardware store, but my position is. I'm a lawyer. I have represented telecommunications companies for over a quarter century. So I've, I've listened to enough engineers. Unlike most attorneys, I try and listen more than I speak. And I try and explain things to, to folks in the way I would like them explained to me. So I appreciate your time listening tonight.
Very, very clear. I appreciate your clarity. Absolutely.
I have, I have a question. Am I muted? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I was muted earlier. So if you can tell me in layman's language, if you can, so I can better understand. Once five G is rolled out, how will this equipment interface with, with the system to, to. To put five G out to the town?
Sure. So I, I don't know what T-Mobile's plans are for five G in the town of Woodstock. Okay, five G is very, you know, it's very important. It's the next technology. What I can tell you is that, you know, T-Mobile is doing five G on six hundred megahertz spectrum. Okay, which is one of the spectrum frequencies we have available to us. Which means that unlike, unlike a, an applicant that will only do, let's say, five G. On a very high frequency that covers a very small area, that will require many, many more sites. T-Mobile's doing it with six hundred megahertz, which covers the furthest. So in theory, and again, this is not part of the application, it's not relevant to an eligible facilities request. But in theory, T-Mobile could provide five G, whatever we want to call that. Using six hundred megahertz spectrum without, without modifying essentially a lot of the parameters of this site. Now, here's what's important. Here's what five G is, not technically. Here's what it is from a practical standpoint. It's faster and there's less latency. What is latency? Latency is the time it takes for the signals to go back and forth. Okay, so if you have a driverless car, you want your latency to be very, very, very low. You don't want a lot of time between the signals going back and forth and your car swerving to hit a deer. Okay? If you are doing telemedicine, you want your latency to be very low. Because again, you want, you want the, the technical data to get in the doctor's hands and the evaluation of it. And you want to have high bandwidth. You want to have that speed. You want to have that low latency and you want to have that high bandwidth. Be able to move a lot of data, big data being moved. Now, what are we using that for in Woodstock? Right now, I don't know. I, I mean, they're using, they're pushing it in New York City. They're pushing it in other areas. People, you know, people like to hear that they have a five G phone. Does it improve service? Yes, but there are applications that you and I don't even know about yet. That even the engineers don't know about yet. When you had, and I assume, I'm assuming Chairman, you were an attorney, and I'm assuming you had a BlackBerry. And when you had a BlackBerry, you couldn't surf the internet and you couldn't do work on the BlackBerry, other than sending messages and emails and talk.
Absolutely. I loved my BlackBerry.
I love, I was the last one to give it up. They had to pry it out of my hands. But with the BlackBerry, you couldn't do certain data. You couldn't do certain applications with data. And they invented the iPhone. And before they invented the iPhone, they didn't have, you know, they invented the iPhone, they didn't have Google Maps yet. Now I can't go anyplace without having my Google Maps on my phone, which, you know, was enabled because of three G and ultimately four G. So what is five G? Five G is faster speeds. Five G is lower latency. Five G is greater capacity that will bring services that people want. But it's not, it's not this scary different technology with different frequency bands and higher power. It's not necessarily that. So that's why I'm always hesitant to talk about it in, in some global term.
Well, I appreciate your, your expansive answer on that. It's very helpful to me. Is the equipment that's up there now in T-Mobile's array, is that a six hundred megahertz?
No, so what we have up there now, we have seven hundred. We have nineteen hundred and we have twenty one hundred.
So is the seven hundred megahertz ca, I know you said is this for four G only at this point, but is this, is the? Seven hundred megahertz capable of transmitting to five G?
I, I don't know if it's quote unquote capable. I'm sure that there's a way to make it capable, but I, I don't know that for a fact. I can't tell you that. Seven hundred was traditionally the, the block or the frequency band. That was given to the PCS carriers to compete with the cellular carriers. So when OmniPoint, which is now T-Mobile and Sprint, which is now T-Mobile came out. They were given nineteen hundred and seven hundred, a low band and a high band. And they were competing with AT&amp;T and Verizon, who back then were AT&amp;T or Singular. And, and they were called Bell Atlantic back then. They had, they had eight hundred. And they also, and then they eventually got nineteen hundred. So that's how they competed. Since that time, the federal government has provided all this additional spectrum at an auction, at auctions, different auctions. To provide the capacity, because everyone's using their wireless devices.
Okay, are you able to, well, let me re-ask it. The technical report that you supplied with your application, does it address the quantum of electromagnetic energy that will be? Emitted by the tower if these changes are approved?
So we submitted another certification that, that certifies that we will be in compliance with the FCC regulations. And the way it, the way it works is that each band. Each one of our licenses is, is allowed to, we're allowed to operate with a certain frequency, a certain amount of frequency within that band, certain power. And then the FCC regulations has formulas. The formulas are slightly different depending on the, depending on the. Frequency band. And there are methodologies approved by the FCC. Of a, a report called OET Bulletin sixty five, which gives the formulas. It has a lot of. Complicated mathematical formulas. You run it through a computer and it says you, you're in compliance, you're not. We have to be in compliance in order to maintain our licenses. And we've submitted the certification confirming we will be in compliance. And the simple reason, quite frankly, why we will be in compliance, they are not, the regulations are not necessarily. Emissions regulations. They are exposure regulations.
What's the difference?
Different, the difference is. What comes out of the antenna isn't emission. But the regulations look at is how do those emissions expose people in normally accessible areas? So what's a normally accessible area? If you had an antenna on a rooftop and you can walk in front of the antenna, you're exposed. Okay, and you're exposed because you're right in front of the antenna. Now, if you're a thousand feet away, the exposure is less because it does drop exponentially. Because we're greater than ten meters or about thirty feet off the ground. Okay, and we're on a tower, that the only way you can get in front of the antennas is if you levitated. Or you had a crane and you were on top of the tower, that by the laws of physics, we will be in compliance with the regulations. That's just, and that's in the FCC regulations as well. There's actually a bulletin. It's quite old, but it's very, it's very fascinating. There's a document out there that was put together by both industry and municipalities. It's called the Local Officials' Guide for determining, determining RF compliance. And it talks about the, the, that, that as long as the antennas are more than thirty feet above ground. I'm sorry, one thirty-three feet, because it's ten meters above ground. And on a non-building structure, it's going to be in compliance. But nevertheless, we submitted a certification from our engineer that certified that we will be in compliance.
All right, so. On another question. Do you agree that the planning board has restrictions on it under the statutory and regulatory framework? That the town board as proprietor of the, of the tower does not have?
So I believe that the planning board does have restrictions on the federal law. They're quite clear that you cannot. You cannot base your opinion on the environmental effects of radio frequency. The town board, I think, is limited because there is no limitation in our lease. And we'll happy to submit a copy of that lease. The town board, I think, I think the reality is that. The town has a code that requires T-Mobile to go on this tower. And if the town board, even in its proprietary fashion. Prohibited T-Mobile from being able to provide its services. That it would still be in violation of federal law. We don't have to argue about that tonight, tonight, and I don't think we'll. And I don't think we'll ever have to argue about it because I am confident that our lease agreement gives us these rights and that we're not limited under the lease agreement. But the reality is if the town board did have the right under the lease agreement, which I don't believe they do. And if the town board did decide to somehow limit T-Mobile, T-Mobile's option would be to sue under a prohibition in federal court or propose a second tower on private property. And I don't think that that would be, uh, as Mr. Laval said, you know, a, a, a practical political solution. Uh, because I think we could all agree, being on a seventeen plus acre property with over a thousand feet of uh, of buffer, of vegetative buffer, that uh, on a tower where we're not extending the height, where we're below the other carrier, uh, that's been there for well over a decade, that this is the right spot to be.
Well, I thank you for your perspective on that and I, I wanted to find out what it is because, you know, as a planning board, up until recently, we haven't really gotten into telecom matters. And um, we're in a town where um, as you will probably find out, uh, if you don't know already, there's a fairly large complement of citizens who have concerns about uh, five G and aspects of five G that we're not allowed to consider uh, or, you know, take in or, or using our dis- disposition of the application. And um, so, you know, on the one hand, we're volun- we're a volunteer board and we're trying to execute our duties as in, in the proper way and in the best way that we can. But on the other hand, you have a town board uh, that may have different discretion than we do in terms of how they approach these. And so we're here on these applications, but they're over there with the lease rights that they have. And so, you know, we're not all in the same room, hearing the same case at the same time. So it, it makes it a little, uh, challenging to uh, figure out what's the right thing for us to do as a planning board. I mean, we can simply, if, if an application does qualify as an eligible facilities request, we know what the law requires and uh, and, you know, and we'll have to decide the case properly uh, uh, with guidance from our council. But um, at the same time, uh, during all these public hearings, the public is rightfully coming into our body as an available forum and bringing all kinds of concerns, uh, which uh, they believe are legitimate and I'm not prepared to say they're not. And yet, here we are kind of caught between the federal regulations on one side and, and the, the, the town board's ability to do the right thing, however they see it, on the other. And so this is just kind of
We, we appreciate your position and, and that's why um, we took our time and we tried to provide you with as much information that would help you understand these issues. And even though there were times tonight where I said, you know, I don't believe it's relevant. I tried to give you and my client tried to give you with documents, the information that, you know, to show you that we are transparent, we're not trying to hide anything. We think we have a good application. We think we're entitled to the approval and, and we want to try and help you work through that process in a reasonable way. Um, what you won't hear from is you won't hear from the people that really do want the service. I mean, that I'm confident to say because they generally don't come out to these meetings. Um, so that, you know, while you do hear people that, that are opposed to it, uh, rightfully or wrongfully, however their perspective is, they have the right to speak. Uh, but what you won't hear from is you won't hear from the people that, that rely on distance learning and, and using wireless service and running their business and making an emergency call and doing telehealth medicine uh, remotely. And um, and, you know, just even calling home to say hello to their loved one, you know, on the way to work. So uh, you generally don't hear from those folks. They don't have, they don't take the time to come to these meetings. It's unfortunate, but that's the reality.
Well, frankly, in other telecom cases, we, we've heard from both sides and we've actually had petitions from some business owners as well opposing five G. And we've had multiple letters and emails from people uh, opposing five G and have also heard from some people supporting, they have no problem with it. So we're just the planning board and we're precluded from, you know, looking at a lot of the issues that they're raising, but the town board may be able to do. And that's, that's why I wanted to get your perspective.
I appreciate that.
Okay, do any other board members have any uh, comments or questions they want to raise at this point on this application during this review? Okay, and Kim, do you have anything that you feel you need to tell me at this point? Not, and um,
Uh, not for, not for the presentation. Uh, thank you. Um, but if you want, you can probably start scheduling a public hearing.
Yeah, I think that would be, be good. But let's hear it from the rest of the board members. Do we have a consensus on that to move this to a public hearing?
Um, I understood this was a sketch plan review. Do we have to have a further step before the plant, before the public hearing? No. Oh, okay. Then no, I think we're
Okay, but I do want to reiterate, there were several items uh, requested to be produced that the council said he would produce. I wanted to make sure we get those before the public hearing if we can. The stealth SOX information, if we have that, pictures as to what they look like. And any, you know, exemplars you might have on that so we can be fully informed as to what those will look like and their specs.
Very well.
And also uh, uh, your three, your three-way agreement that you referred to between Crown, the town and, and your client. So we'd like to take a look at that as well. John Laval?
Is that, Stuart, was that the master agreement that you were referring to?
No, we have the master agreement. You referred to a three, you referred to a three-party agreement between uh, T-Mobile, the town and Crown, so I'd like to see that.
It, it's technically J and S, who is the who is the predecessor to Crown. It's the tower lease, but we can certainly provide that.
Thank you, sir.
Tom.
Laval?
Melissa, do we have as part of the package, the actual propagation maps?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, I'm fine. I just wanted to take a look at them, so I would love to come up to the office and take a look.
I think there is a, the technical report.
They are, correct.
No, I had sent you a separate copy of that, so if you look at the end of it, you'll see it. If you can't find it, ask Melissa.
Thank you.
John could get, I could get you a set too if you want to take them.
No, I just want to look at them.
Okay, anytime.
Then for the record, do we have an indication of when this application was filed?
March eleventh.
That was filed with the building department?
I received it March fourteenth.
From whom?
The building department.
So council did you file, was it March eleventh with the building department?
So I, so I'll tell you what we did. We filed by email with both building department and the planning department on March eleventh. Technically, the shot clock starts when we file, whomever we file it with, whatever the first filing is. The difference between the eleventh and the fourteenth, I'll represent to you tonight. I'm not going to fight with you over how your meetings fall as long as, you know, as long as they're falling within, you know, those couple days. Uh, we're looking to work with you on that.
Thank you, sir. Um, are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Gaudioso before we schedule a public hearing? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Melissa, when's the next available date reasonably to?
May fifth.
Is there anything before then? I'm just thinking of the six days that, in case we need another meeting to discuss after the hearing, after the
There isn't because we rescheduled the workshop meeting for the twenty first.
So that would leave us until May twelfth or May fourteenth to bring this to a close, right? So yeah, and we don't have any meetings after May fifth until after the sixty days runs. There's nothing before May fifth?
Not unless you want to call a special meeting.
When does the shot clock run out?
Oh, it's sixty days from, let's say, Mar- March fourteenth, so it'll be April fourteenth, so it'd be nice to get
May fourteen, May fourteenth.
April fourteenth. Sixty days after March fourteenth, right?
Might be a little earlier than that because they're not thirty day months.
Yeah, no, the earliest because we only have, we have next week. Then we have the twenty first, which is a workshop meeting, which we have Dennis Doyle coming. I can't reschedule him again.
All right.
May fifth. He's doing me a favor.
Well, let's put it on the earliest possible date. Melissa, you'll send out the notices to
May fifth.
Each representative and
If you, the planning board, would like, we could hold a special meeting and I will take care of that. It's up to you.
Or Melissa, what you could also do is you can either have a special meeting just for the public hearing. You could keep the public hearing from May fifth at a regularly scheduled meeting and then have a special meeting after May fifth to just be able to deliberate, um, if you need more time.
Okay, so Kim.
I would go along.
May fifth as the public hearing with the possibility of scheduling the following few weeks after a special meeting just to wrap it up.
That will also be on Thursday?
Oh, we'll see. We can do whatever we want to do.
All right.
Do we want to say now? I'm sorry, Kyle?
It'll be in person.
Maybe, May.
It might, it might, it, it, it could be, uh, at least for now, the virtuals have been extended until April fifteenth. We'll have to see if it gets extended beyond that.
Okay.
And they usually wait until the last minute, right?
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, they usually do.
The day before recently.
Yes.
Mr. Gaudioso and planning board, we are scheduling a public hearing for this application for May fifth. And whatever I have to do besides that, you'll let me know on May fifth.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for your time this evening. I appreciate your courtesies.
I just have one closing question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Where was the hardware store?
Well, South, South Shore, Long Island. It's, it's actually a hardware store in a mason yard. It was started by my grandfather, my father, who's now ninety-two, still works, my brother, my brother's son. So we're on the fourth generation and, and uh, I wouldn't say we're going strong, but they're still going, that's for sure.
So you were
Where in the South Shore was it?
Uh, Kopeg, if you're familiar with the
Yeah.
Very nice.
Good fishing.
Yes, very good fishing. Well, thank you again. I'll see you on May fifth and uh, thank you again for the time tonight.
All right, have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Good night, thank you.
So that completes the scheduled items. Uh, there's some unfinished business for making a motion regarding a central line resolution, but I don't think we're the
We're not doing that. But can you approve the minutes for me, please?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Love it. Second?
Second.
Perfecto.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so uh, there's no further uh, business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, wonderful. The meeting is concluded.
Uh, next week we are here. It's back to back because this is, this was technically our workshop. So just so you guys know, just to reiterate, and then we're making up that workshop, April twenty first, four, twenty first, in which Dennis Doyle is going to join us and I promised him the whole time.
So next week on April seventh, the, the AT&amp;T case will be on the discussion.
Yep, I already added it on my notes.
Okay.
All right, let me know if you need anything. I think we're good.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks.
Good night all.
Good night, John. Peter was too quiet this meeting. Stuart, he may be handing it off. You good?
I don't know who Barbara Stumpke is, but she's still on.